And I would say that in the next two to five years, we're going to see even more turnover with the firefighters.
And historically, we pull it out of contingency or something?
We haven't really, we really haven't had to because as I said, we haven't had that many. And then if you want to talk scary, when we have police leave, the police and the fire are biggest, you know, the biggest numbers.
What would you say is the total liability for the accrued absences?
That was at eight hundred.
Eight hundred?
Yeah, that was that number.
If they all look at it.
Eight hundred seventy-three thousand.
Yikes.
So Anna, with the audit reports of this past year, were there recommendations for like annual contributions based on history, based on?
We haven't, we haven't had any, but then again, to this point, we haven't struggled with it.
Okay.
So that's why we started putting a provision for it in the budget.
So you're saying this is self-generated, but we didn't have a recommendation on annual required contribution?
That's correct.
Okay.
But that's why we look at that number every year to know what it is, and it's really started to, you know, really started to grow.
That may be something that our auditor, you know, should give some advice on, you know, coming up, next audit report, or actuarial, whatever, for sure. There should be, I think, a definite required contribution, you know, at least based on some history or trends that we.
And we're starting to develop that now.
Yes, which is great. I think that's wonderful. Okay. All right, thanks.
Isn't this the budget where we typically track legal expenses?
It is. That's coming up next.
Yeah, it's in here.
So the next section, you know, moving on, is our legal expenses. And last year, we did have a very, you know, a very light year. So far, year-to-date, we're doing very well. And I do look at this over a ten-year period when working on developing the budget. And so in next year's budget, based on the last couple of years, we did make, we did make some reductions. And again, we do our best to estimate with an overall number, and we do, as you know, make transfers within the legals because some end up ultimately being a little higher than, you know, we originally planned. But we've been fortunate enough where overall, we've had enough in the legal budget.
So that's good.
I mean, we have had some problems in the past, but it was like an isolated incident when it's been, you know, a big incident. And then the next section, unemployment compensation. I did, in the narrative, provide you with some historical costs for this. And it's, this year, we haven't had to pay anything out yet. We haven't had any claims because we do it, we do it on a pay-as-you-go. Well, we've had people that have submitted to.
To unemployment office or unemployment compensation. You know, our paperwork is dead on, and we kind of brought that over from my business. We're not paying out unemployment compensation for any of those hearings. I wonder if they're justified so far.
This year, we've been fortunate. But I did carry forward the same amount into next year's budget. And then the eviction and moving storage, that we're required by statute, if someone, you know, moves out, we're required to pick up the bill. So if someone gets evicted from an apartment or something, the landlord will leave the furniture at the curb, and then we have to put it in storage. And after so much time, we'll have a little locker sale. So this is what these funds are for.
Tax sale at the high school next week.
Things we do.
High school.
Oh, really?
Tax sale.
And checking the indices, every year, we have, we have to have an auditor come in and review all the land records as they've been recorded to make sure they've all been done properly. The next account is for our liability insurances, and we have a small increase there. And that also makes a provision for deductibles because when we have claims, we do have deductibles on our policy. So in the event that we need some funding for that, we do budget for it here. We do have an employee assistance plan. We pay the fee, and if any employees need the service, they can go for up to three sessions. The next account is to provide for any professional development, training that we may need during the year. And then the next account is for various organizations that, organizations that the town pays dues for. The reason for the increase has to do with the seat bus service. And then finally, reprinting the ordinances. We don't believe that we're going to have to do that anymore because we're going through a process of getting them codified. And then it's going to be an ongoing updated process, and they'll be published online. Of course, if somebody wants a hard copy, we'll have to print one. We'll have the ability to do that. But they'll be more currently updated, and they'll be available online. Right now, I believe they've been written, and our legal counsel is reviewing what the codification company has put out there.
So that pension line is hurtful, right? I mean, I know we can't do anything about it. I'm just saying. It went up last year thirteen and a half percent, now another ten and a half percent, which is, you know, eighty-some thousand dollars for one line item. I'm just stating the obvious, but, you know, if we're saying more people are retiring, that's just going to be a big nut, right?
Well, the thing is, when we have the actuarial valuation done every year, what that, part of what that does is it takes our active, you know, it takes our active census, and it's looking at what the employees' wages are, what their ages are, when it's expected that they're going to retire. And then it does, you know, it like carries it all the way out to those years. And it's done based on an amortized schedule so that you try to keep that a more as level type funding as you can.
Okay.
Didn't we have to switch to a different actuarial table, or have we done that yet?
We.
It's all based on life expectancy.
We have, and we did, we have, like in the past, we recently did make a change from one.
It drove the number up, obviously. Expecting people a little longer, therefore looked a little longer. It drove our number up, and we were struggling with that. But the reality is, you've got to use the actual, correct actuarial figures, and we had to update that. So a little bit of that is built into that.
Right. And so here's where the negotiation and the contracts and stuff comes in, right? Because if the salaries, if we take away some of the steps and all that, we gain on the pension side, right? So I'm just saying, that's why it would, there's a lot of potential there, I think, for us to save. Not just in the line item itself, but on the retirement and benefit side and all of that business. Thanks.
Does that, does that increase, Anna, that ten percent increase, decrease our unfunded pension liability? Or are you saying that that's just because of these actuarial tables and people are living longer?
Well, I mean, there's, I mean, there's a lot more to it because like there's more like, because like, at the end of the year, say for example, we have an investment lost. Well, they don't take that all in one year. They spread it, they do what they call smoothing, and they spread it out over several years. So your.
If we had an investment loss last year, do you think it's time to maybe choose a new investment?
We didn't, we didn't. But I'm just saying, like, there have been some shifts where, you know, we did have some losses, you know, in the past, not necessarily like last year. And then when you have a gain, you don't take the gain all in one year either because then this number would really be, you know, much.
So what, so if this budget number gets approved, what is our unfunded pension liability percentage? So are we, so if we contribute nine hundred thousand dollars to our pension fund this year, are we eighty percent funded for the liability?
I believe we're in, I believe we're in that range. I'll make a note.
I'm curious, I'm trying to get my head around the ten percent increase. Is it because we're funding more of our liability? Or is it simply an increase based on increased longevity? I mean, I know there's a lot of factors, but I also know that we track unfunded pension liability percentages.
We do.
What was the number last year, and what will this bring us to? That's my question.
Well, that I wouldn't know until we get the next valuation. But the last valuation, I believe we were either, you know, like in the high seventies, around eighty percent. And that, you know, we are considered to be, you know, well-funded. We're being responsible, we're being responsible about the way that we've been funding our plan. The important thing is that we make the, we have historically made the annual required contribution that, you know, that comes as a result of having that valuation done every year.
Okay.
Other questions for the government?
The establishment.
Any other questions? Okay. The only comment I had was that four hundred dollars for eviction and storage seems like silly number.
It's a placeholder.
It's not yet.
It's a placeholder. You've got to have something there, so if we need to transfer in, at least it's already there.
I would think if you're storing a pair of shoes.
The last major one we did was the Elms Hotel, and we, you know, had to remove, I think, twelve people out of the building, take the storage. I mean, it was a significant event. But you're paid back in time with that, but we still need a line item to pay out for the storage and moving people, et cetera.
All right.
It's just one of those unfunded mandates that every town has to do.
All right. If there's no other questions, we move on to contingencies.
Contingency. Our contingency line, five hundred, the second one, first of all, there's two from here. There's payroll contingencies, that's on items on collective bargaining that we haven't come to contract with yet. The second one, that twenty percent decrease out of three hundred, five hundred, is not a scientific number. It was the number we needed with a significant reduction to get the budget to zero. As you know, that's how we delivered it to you. So we typically would like more money in there, but we also are a fan of having a zero increase on our expense side. So we did bring that down. We're running government pretty efficiently these days. If we don't take money out of some of these departments that you're reviewing tonight and the future nights, and let them live and die by their budget, we think a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars should be enough. You know, if we get into an emergency situation, we'd hate to go into the rainy day fund, but we could always do that and then go and pay that back in next year's budget. But we think, historically, if you look over at least the last three years that I've been sitting at the desk, we haven't really needed to go all the way into, use every dollar in that, in that account. But we think a hundred and fifty-three is adequate. That one sixty figure up top for payroll, we have three, three units, three collective bargaining units that we're working with right now. And we're hopeful that the numbers that come in will be close to beating this number, that we have put enough money away to cover the negotiated increases.
But doesn't that also cover non-collective bargaining unit staffs?
Yeah. That I can be a little bit more predict, I can predict a little bit stronger with that one.
Because that's all the budgets, I mean, that's all included in this budget. Yeah.
What the sentence do you shoot for, or would you like?
So I can't tell you. You're smart people, you could always take out a calculator and figure it out, maybe. But, you know, we don't want to obviously tip our hand as we go into negotiations, what our goal is and what our number is. But it's, I'll tell you what, it's significantly lower than it has been in the past. And arbitration, I've been watching arbitration numbers coming out of the state. As you know, we're bound to those numbers. We're, you know, the state doesn't allow municipal employees to strike. Instead, we went into agreements that we would use mediation and binding arbitration, and those numbers have been in the two-point-two-five to two-point-four range. We think, we're hopeful to do better than that.
So, hopefully I'm not, well, so, don't we need to be, don't we shoot for seven percent of our budget in contingency to keep our bond rating at a certain level?
That's.
Okay.
That's the rainy day fund.
Okay.
Undesignated fund balance.
This is a contingency that's used so throughout the year, like for example.
Just so happens they're very close.
I mean, just like, for example, if we didn't fund, you know, the retirement liability that we started, and then all of a sudden, people started leaving, and we had, we found ourselves in a position where we had to, you know, pay them accrued benefits, then that would be something that we may come back to for. Or if we had runaway legal expenses for some reason, we may have to come back.
Imagine that. Okay, so.
I just kind of, or, you know.
It's different than the undesignated fund balance.
Sure.
My mistake.
This is like planned budget account in case we have any budget.
Okay, I like it. I have one of these in my house.
I don't know what you're saying there. We'll talk later. So Anna, maybe next meeting, whenever it's, in the next few meetings that we have, could you provide that current number of the undesigned fund balance?
Undesignated fund balance?
Yes.
It's about five to one.
Okay.
About exactly.
Yeah. It's exactly, okay. That's what we.
And that is in about the seven percent range, Anna?
That's way above seven percent. That's what I was just, so this number's actually kind, it's just under seven percent, which I got me thinking, wait, is this the number?
Yeah.
But this is out of our budget, which is what, forty-five million or whatever that number is, forty-four and change?
Yeah.
So seven percent of that turns out to be three hundred and thirty-four thousand. So we have five million though in the undesigned?
A point one in the undesigned.
That's way, way more than seven percent. I'm usually wrong, so feel free to correct me.
Seventy.
Wait. Oh, it's the whole town budget, not the municipal budget?
Two.
Okay. I was wrong.
Yeah.
But this number is so close to seven percent of the town budget. That's what led me down that path. My apologies for the confusion. Thank you for clearing that up.
Other questions on this?
Any other questions on this? Any other questions on contingency? I think with a seventy-two million total budget, if you can get within a hundred and fifty thousand, that's off to you. I can't do that good. I don't have as much control over my variables, but, all right.
We're in a bit of a dormant stage right now, too. Again, we're trying to just keep the lights on. We're not creating new projects and really trying to be progressive and too much, hate you that word, but, but really, I mean, it's just, let's maintain. And when you're just maintaining and you're trying to not grow, not come up with new initiatives, not do any major projects, it becomes a little bit easier.
Redoing what we've done before, so it's easier to do.
Yes.
It's just, I. Capital. Seven-two-four.
Well, I don't know how to do this. Yeah, why don't you go ahead and go through it mostly, but it's stuff that we've already purchased and their payments, a lot of the acquisitions.
So in the capital budget, in addition to the regular budget worksheet, there is a spreadsheet that, I think it's the last page, that I think can be a little helpful in going through this department.
I don't know where you're talking. You're not talking this, that you ended up, are you?
Nope, this. It's in your budget book.
Under what section?
Seven-twenty-four.
I don't think I have that. Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, it's there. My bad.
So, so if you look at like the first account, that is what we plan, what we propose to fund in CNRE through the general fund. So it's a hundred fifteen thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars, and it includes ten thousand dollars for roofs, fifteen thousand for townwide HVAC replacement needs, and then forty-two thousand, five hundred and sixty for any various town projects that may arise during the year. Five thousand dollars, we've been putting away for eventual replacement of our town servers. If you remember, a few years back, we had an emergency crash. So since then, we've been putting money aside so that we can have a planned replacement of those servers. And then forty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-one dollars for, you know, to set aside for the next revow that comes up. And then the next account is self-explanatory. The ten thousand dollars is our annual replacement of town-wide computer equipment. The funds for parks and rec have to do with acquisition payments, nothing. Niaci fire equipment, that is for, there's forty thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars that are for acquisition payments for the Scott Air Packs. And we do, if you notice in that department, we do show a ten thousand dollar revenue. And for those Scott Air Packs, the ambulance association is assisting with the ten thousand dollar, they give us ten thousand dollars each year to help defray that cost. And then there's eleven thousand, two hundred dollars for four sets of turnout gear. So that's what makes up the fifty-one, nine thirty-nine. And then for Flanders Fire, there's eight thousand dollars for a thermal imaging camera. There's a small payment for acquisition of eight hundred twenty-two dollars. They have some battery replacement funds in there, some fire hose and turnout gear. So that's what the, those are the items that will comprise that thirty-one thousand. Sixty-two thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars is all prior acquisition plan payments that we have for police vehicles that have been purchased. And then we have twenty-seven thousand dollars, of which nineteen thousand is for a server replacement, and eight thousand dollars is for, I believe it's a boat motor that we need for the boat that we share with Waterford. And then emergency management, there's.
Wasn't that a brand-new boat that we bought?
Bought that last year, I thought.
Last year?
Harbor management boat, I think. Police bus.
Yeah. So what, pardon, New Year, what is the boat for?
What do you call the patrols they do on water?
It's water policing.
Okay.
You know, people under the influence or driving in a no-lake zone and all that. There's a lot of policing, a lot of, too, that we have to do.
Okay. And that's something you share with Waterford, is what you're saying?
And we share that.
For the first.
We share the asset with Waterford and the patrols. The patrols as well. They take a shift, we take a shift. It's not all the time. We share the maintenance of the boat. Thirty thousand dollars is needed to.
And how many police cruisers are in that sixty-two? That's just two now?
We buy two a year.
That's actually prior, okay, so that's prior purchases because on a prospective basis, what we're doing now is when they do the outside police jobs, the cruiser fee, which is twenty-five dollars, that is getting deposited to CNRE. So the plan is, all of those funds are going to be used to pay for future police vehicles. So it, next year, for probably the first three years, I'm estimating we're going to need to still do them through the acquisition plan, but we'll use those CNRE funds to pay those payments. And then hopefully by the third year, we're going to have enough of a reserve where we'll be able to start paying cash for them.
Okay, at twenty-five dollars, so.
Well, right now, I mean, right now.
So you're talking about, you took about like thousands?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
We've already collected. We just started in September, and we've taken in a little over eighty-four hundred dollars, and we have another eighty-four hundred dollars, you know, receivable.
And we never did this before?
It's been, it was always a five-dollar charge, and the funds were, that was part of a general fund revenue.
Uh-huh.
So now we're, you know, that, we diverted it to CNRE.
Good move.
Did I mention I like revenue?
So we're hoping, we're hoping for them to be self-sustaining.
Very good.
At least on the car side.
On the car side. Let me rephrase that. Let me rephrase that, sorry. And then the next one is Public Works Acquisition Program, and then Public Works for plows. In the eighteen, nineteen year, we are proposing two new items, which total three hundred and eighty thousand, a trash truck, which is a three hundred thousand dollar item, and then a trackless plow for the sidewalk, which is eighty thousand dollars.
Trash truck for three hundred?
Yes.
And what was the other item?
Trackless plow and collars, sidewalk plow, thirty thousand dollars.
Aren't we looking to have the homeowners take care of their sidewalks?
We're hoping that they will be able to take care of a lot of that, but we still have a lot of municipal sidewalks in town, many, many, many. So we still have to get that done.
Eighty thousand dollars for that little plow for the sidewalks? Go ahead.
They last a long time, though, twenty, thirty years.
Eighty thousand dollars.
Let's make a note of that.
Three times what I just paid for them, never mind.
Well, the ones that we have now, we bought them used from, I don't remember if it was Groton or what, and we've gotten a lot of mileage out of them, but now they're just, they're beyond.
So are these used quotes?
No, no.
Why aren't we looking at used ones?
When we actually go through the process, the acquisition process of the process, what we have in front of you and all that, we'll have those bids, we'll have those options. This is mainly the budget department.
Okay.
And the question I think I've asked in the past, how do you define capital?
It's actually a good question, because I've had the same.
I don't know that I have a definition for it. We're.
As opposed to.
And I think the school has a different definition, correctly. They put all everything into their annual budget and economy. Big-ticket items, big-ticket items that typically would pay cash for, that would last twenty years. So something that could be spread out over twenty years.
So I think typically you can expense up to five thousand dollars according to the, what is it, the safe harbor rule, according to the IRS? So is that, is that what we've adopted, up to five thousand is an expense?
That's typically what we'll start as a threshold to put something in capital. Yes, that's correct.
It's got to be at least five thousand dollars. And it's got to last at least, how many years?
Well, cars only last five, right? Patrol cars last five. Trackless machines might last twenty. The garbage truck, we hope to get eight to ten years on.
Okay, so I understand that there's a whole bunch of different stuff. My only question was, do we have our definition of capital that we say it's got to be at least five years and five thousand dollars, or something like that?
No, not necessarily. Things do bounce back and forth when we're having a C and E meetings. We determine whether they should go in actual budgets or go into operative budgets or capital budgets. Should it be bonded? Is it CNRE situation? Is it a state-funded situation?
And that's part of the reason why I was asking the question, is that when we talk to the fire department about their budget, I mean, what's a Scotch Air Pack back here? Could be an equipment on their line item, and I'm just trying to somehow or another, in my deep brain, put the pieces together so I can kind of see how they go together.
We discussed that before. One department, one house, our house, bought it all at once and bonded our acquisition out for many years, and one is buying for a year.
And then the chief is buying his own.
That is something that's got to be defined.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah. So we just developed this wonderful long-range plan, or Joe and his group did, right? They went through all the big infrastructure sort of projects. So I'm curious, can we realize some gains by some of these? In other words, we have a bucket for HVAC. I'm just picking one item at random here. Have we, have we bounced this expenditure off the plan and said, oh, you know what? Next year, we're going to need to do HVAC here and here, one year off, whatever. We could bundle these together, economies of scale. That's the whole point of doing that plan. Have we used it to develop this list?
Well, actually, next year, the items that we plan to do. Well, actually, next year, the items that we plan to do in that long-range plan are all going to use LoSiF funding.
Tom, let's see.
All right, I don't feel like you answered me, but maybe I didn't understand you.
No, well, so, like, for the items that we're going to do, okay, so the plan has just been developed.
Yeah.
And we have had communications, you know, between, you know, that, in principle, that the town and the board can look at big-ticket items and try to, to do them together.
Yep.
Whether it's practical, well, yet, that's yet to be determined, but for next year's plan, the items that we plan to do from the plan that we've developed this year, we're going to use LoSiF funds to pay for them. Okay, so they're not, you don't see them in this capital budget?
Okay, so, so, I guess what you're telling me is, we, the plan hasn't served us at this point.
Joe uses it, he knows what, how many HVAC systems we have, based on the, and when the repairs are going to be needed, or the replacement. I can tell you, we don't put enough money away. I can tell you every year that you, you give my budget back to me and say, go find another 100,000, first place I go is I raid the HVAC, CNRE, and then I raid the roof, CNRE.
Yeah.
So, we have all these eventual expenses, but we've got to take them out of the current operating number to make the number.
Right, but I don't think it's exactly what I'm asking, though.
Okay.
But maybe I'm, maybe I've been unclear. I mean, I heard what you said about LoSiF, but what I'm trying to understand is, all the, the time and energy that we put into that, even if it's just from a municipal standpoint, I mean, I'm hoping somebody's going to don the orange vest between the Board of Ed and the town, and say, you know, and I'm thinking that's going to be somebody under your direction, Mark. I mean, I don't know who else, who else would have, would provide that direction.
Or...
But we would want to be looking at, and my question is, are we in a position to realize any benefit from the integration of those plans in terms of this capital plan or, or not?
I can't...
Is my question clear?
I can't point to anything specifically where, that Joe developing that plan influenced this capital plan at all. We know what's coming up, I think...
Did we use it in, when we developed this, or we're not there yet?
The capital group of plan...
I would say we're not, I would say...
I think Joe brings us his side of things, which is the maintenance of the buildings, but as we sit in committee, that, that plan isn't there. Not necessary that the fire department is part of the conversation about Joe's maintenance plan. It doesn't drive, it doesn't drive the capital number.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, but I...
It just doesn't drive the capital.
I think, it, it sounds like it could, though. I mean, maybe in small pieces, but we got to start somewhere. So, I, I would like us to consider looking at that. I don't know if we can do it for this year. It's certainly not too late, I mean...
Well, we can add things in, but...
Well, no, I'm not talking about adding them in. I mean, I'm, I'm not going there. I'm just saying, if we have to do something here in next year, and, you know, I'm, I'm talking about looking at it to say, all right, can we save some money, even if it's between this year and, and next year? And you could say to us, you know what, we didn't see this. Between this number and this number, we would have spent 25,000 dollars, but because we're going to do this scope of work over time, we really, it's going to only be 20,000, whatever.
I'll look at it, I don't, I don't see that that was ever an opportunity, but we can take a look at it, continue to...
You know, because you'd be bundling similar work together, and, and vendor work and all of that, which was the point of doing the plan, I think.
That, along with, you know, having the resources to be able to do that.
Sure. Yep.
And that's, that's a piece of it. I mean, I think we've done the first step. We have it all laid out. This is what we've identified that we're going to need to do over the next, you know, let's say, 10 years. And then, the next part of it is figuring out how we pay for it. So, to develop year one, the plan is, is using LoSiF funds to do those items. And so, for future years, how that's going to play out is, is yet to be determined.
So, the expectation would be...
Yeah, I think it's an annual, it's, every year, we've got to look at it over and over again to see how we pay for it. Right now, LoSiF funds are available, not less, for years, they're not there, so then we're going back to what finance, going, look at our capital plan now, look what we're going to have to pay for now that was being paid for at other sources. Listen, I, I think we have a, a dynamic group of department heads that are, that are always forward-thinking, and, you know, Joe is a master of it, is juggling the balls in the air, the puzzle pieces, putting them together. He knows what's coming up, he knows the economy's in scale, I think we, I think we're well-served, and I think that, that process that we run through is being used, that could be used on a wider basis than we do today. Ultimately, I'd love to bring in Board of Ed and the Tommy guy, but I haven't seen that yet. I was only saying that. So, we've got to get that done. The school knows that, so...
I was going to say, Board of Ed's saying the same thing, they would like to get their things on this list as well.
Yeah.
All right, other questions for capital?
No.
We all good? Okay, thank you. Next agenda item is public discussion.
CNRE.
Oh, I thought, I thought CNRE was included in the, yeah, that was included in the capital.
That was part of the first...
Oh, we got to send it out here, I thought we were going to talk about it, but...
I had to look at it twice. The town projects, the roofs, the HVAC systems, the CNRE, the first section that...
I know, but we got handed this out, I just thought we were going to talk about it tonight relative to CNRE.
I want to go over it.
You're, you're the chair, but...
No, listen to what you're saying, if you have another question, you'd like to...
I don't have anything specific, I just didn't know if this was going to be reviewed.
Can we review it?
I mean, is it, I just got it, I haven't a chance to really look at it.
Yeah, so, what it is, is it's, you know, it's an update of, like, the CNRE, like, for example, the first item on the list is revow, so, well, actually, that says 10, 2011, that's, but, that's not the next one, but, so, over time, we, through the CNRE fund, we've budgeted 560,800 dollars, and we've, we've expended 376,936. That was on the revow that we did two years ago. And so, we have a balance right now of 186,864 dollars that would be used towards the next revow, and then, in, in the proposed 1819 budget, we're going to add to that balance. So, just to show you how it works, so, these are just various projects that, you know, are in the fund, you know, completed, close to completion, and it, it shows, you know, what the remaining balances is, are. On, on the second page, you see where it says CNRE Town Projects, that's the money that's shown in the capital, like, for next year, we have 115,121. And these are the various, you know, items that we put the money away for, and have expended some, we have some balances in, in others. So, that's pretty much how, how this is, how this is set up. And as I did mention, we've had about, which you don't see on the sheet, we've had about 8,400 come in so far to date for police vehicles, and we have another, just about that amount outstanding, maybe a little more, so.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on the CNRE section? Hearing none. Public discussions, seeing nobody sitting in the pretty little pumper chairs. I would like to hear if there's any final board comments about anything that's been discussed on the agenda tonight.
I can see that in board.
No additional board comments?
I do, I have a comment.
Coming on.
I would actually like to add, under budget reviews on the agenda, for the next time we meet, a line item called revenue. I have several questions with regard to the projected revenues that were handed out to us. So, I don't know when the appropriate time to discuss that would be, but if we...
Is it on one of the agendas?
That was going to be, okay.
It might be on one of the agendas already.
I just checked, Anna, I, I didn't see it, but, I'll, I'll check again.
Because I thought that was an automatic on one of the agendas.
I don't see it either, actually, but...
Yes, I don't see it.
So, our question to you, the question I was going to ask, and I forgot earlier, and thank you for bringing that up, is where on this agenda do we talk about revenues?
Which is what I just asked.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Just to be clear, we're not talking about something else.
No, we're talking about the same thing.
I, I want to see if it's on a future agenda, just to... Actually, I, when I look at this list, on, it said, review of projected revenues at the March 14th regular meeting, so, if we didn't do it, then I can, you know, we should, I don't know, you want to add it to the next meeting, which is April 3rd?
I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to discuss it at some point. So, on the March 14th, we don't have a, we don't have an agenda for March 14th, right?
Well, that was your regular meeting, and so, we didn't discuss it, so, I guess I'm just going to say that opportunity is gone by us.
Yes, that's behind us.
That's behind us.
Right, yeah.
Wow. I lost a month.
So, the question is...
I don't, I don't want to wait till April.
The question is, does, does it make sense to start our deliberations with the revenue section, then? So, on the April 9th meeting, when we start having our first deliberations, we can bring in the revenue section there, after we're done talking about the spending. Because I think it deserves a, a comprehensive review, and to... I wouldn't want to put it at the beginning of any of these nights, because then everybody that's here to present is going to be presenting later, and I would like to spend some serious time going through it. So, I would propose that we would add it to the April 9th agenda.
Well, it's right there anyways, any outstanding information?
Okay.
It's already there, really.
Okay.
Yeah, but, well, for, you know, I'm, by the time we get to April 9th, I might forget that I had some questions about revenues, can we just spell it out on that agenda? Any outstanding?
Well, we can change that agenda, we can amend that agenda, and put revenues on it.
Right.
That's what we're proposing, is that, any outstanding information, we include revenues.
Just call it revenue review.
No, because then you eliminate everything else that you're referring to. But you can do an A and a B.
Yeah.
It can be revenues, B can be any other.
Yeah, so just please make revenues A, and put any other B.
And that's going to be on April 9th?
Correct. Okay, any additional board comments?
If you want me to, Anna, after the meeting, I have one specific question I wouldn't mind sharing with you, so that you can come prepared April 9th.
So, do, okay, just let me get one thing, so, on that April 9th, do we want to do revenues under new business or old business? I think probably new business, if we haven't discussed them before, right?
I think new business.
I think all these...
Old business?
New.
Okay, okay, so, A will be, okay, I'm sorry.
All of these budgets are coming in under new business. It would be appropriate for revenues to come in under new business.
Okay, so, revenue will be A, and budget deliberations, B.
Thank you.
No?
So, old budgets, any questions that we have during these budget reviews, we can bring in the old business, and then the revenues would be a new presentation, it's new business.
I know, I don't even know what I need.